So we need to confirm the Adult Literacy Center?
As far as I know, it's reserved.
Okay.
Again, Hartland Communications will try to make arrangements to broadcast.
Okay.
So he needed a confirmation too to start there into the bill.
Okay.
But again, this meeting for the 13th will be moved from here to the Adult Learning Center at the library. We're expecting a bigger crowd in this room, hold for the speaker just kind of. So that's the reason for the move, same time, maybe at 6:00. And as far as we know, that's what's going to take place.
All right.
December 13th.
December 13th.
That'd be our scheduled meeting for, our only scheduled meeting for December.
Yeah. Okay. Under Old Business Resolution to rescind Section 2-2, process resolving land annexation dispute. Can we get a motion to take, and what we're going to do is actually go by what the state law says?
Make a motion, we rescind Section 2-2 for the process for resolving land annexation disputes and take this as a second reading.
Okay.
And give that a minute.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Teasley, to take this as a second reading. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five of the vote.
I can make one out, that's R E S C I, rescind.
Do what?
Isn't this bad for sense?
Oh, okay.
R E S C I, wrong word.
Okay.
Wrong thought.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we'll. Move on to the CAD system.
Budget paid out of the ARPA funds. What I need is authorization to sign the contract, basically. The initial cost is about $240,000. That's replacing all the hardware, software, updating software, adding in, software for transfer of information from the CAD system to the sheriff's system, from CAD system to the VMS record keeping system, and to the fire, the two different fire department system. So it shouldn't make life simpler.
Didn't I see where we're going to buy some more computers as well?
Well, yeah, we'll need, this don't include two laptop computers. And the reason for that, we added that in, is if we have to evacuate from this building, we can operate the CAD off premises with the two laptops. So that's the reason. And it wasn't, they didn't, they don't have a source for the laptop, we had to get our own laptop. They put the software into your production laptop.
I'll make a motion for this authorization.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Bennett for authorization, chairman and the county.
Minister.
County district. You got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five of the vote.
Just to note, this is about a six to eight month process to get everything loaded up and changed over.
Okay. Next on the agenda is abandonment of Joe Blackwell Road. I think Commissioner Brown brought this to our attention a few meetings ago and asked for it to be put on the agenda.
Basically, this is a. This, that's it right there.
Adams Town and?
Yeah. It just cut through dirt road from Adams Town over to Lancaster.
Okay.
You got three property owners on it, this is the main property, you got one property here and one property, actually owned by the same person.
You've talked to them too, right? Are you good with it?
I spoke to Mr. Brown earlier, he said there was no public.
There's no driveways off of this road at all.
School buses and nothing else.
I wouldn't say the school bus cut through dirt road. There's no houses on it, so there isn't no reason for it. This is Lancaster Road. This is Adams Town Road. Right there is the intersection of both of the roads. It's a little dirt road that cuts across between this farm land back over here. This is the only other, only residence here in this access off of Adams Town.
I only have one thing, I don't think, I'm not aware if it's anywhere in paperwork, in ordinances, whatever. I don't have a problem closing this road, but on road closings, I think we should have somewhere in the language to where that these roads cannot be adopted for amount of years, 10 years back or whatever, to be reopened. And I tell you why I'm saying that is because if somebody come in and bought all these tracks and land right there, they could turn it into a subdivision, you know, come back at us for this and to use that road. I just think something in the language should clear that if this road is closed.
I think your subdivision ordinance can cover that one. They'd have to build that road up to the proper right of way and us deal to it.
When you abandon it, you're going to deed it back to the original property owners as well.
Okay. Let me just say, I wasn't aware to begin with, but I think that should, that something should have been somewhere.
And we don't, on this particular road, we don't have any deed of right of way. It's prescriptive from top to ditch, top to ditch. So, I mean, it'd go back probably to center of the road to these property owners.
I did read that it was prescriptive.
I'm making a motion, we starting the process of abandoning Joe Blackwell Road.
I'll give you a second on that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second on Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five of the vote. All right. Next is 12D, comprehensive plan discussion. I think Commissioner Dorsey asked for that to be put on the agenda.
I did. You don't have, well, you can pull it up detail. And what I'm looking for is the 2022 update.
I can remember which, which meeting, I probably got to the one of the meeting board. It's on the web, I can't really. You know, which page do you want to go on?
You're talking about strengths and key assets and weaknesses. Right there.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. Right there it is.
Well, that's not exactly what I was looking for, but.
Come on down. Is that what you're looking for there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, come on down just a little bit more. It's the questions and the answers from the survey. It's going to be slide 13. I got something different than you got.
Yeah, you got five points, he's got the actual document, the actual conference point.
Yeah, I got the actual document for what we're doing.
Okay. Well, where I'm going with this is I talked to Adam Hazel last week and wanted to see what latitude we had in updating our comprehensive plan. And people have been very open to us and people have been very concerned about all the growth we've seen. But part of the surveys that were asked, with number one being the most important, please rank these in terms of what you feel is most important to Hart County. Number one answer, preserving the area's rural, small town character predominantly. We all know we have a lot of growth going on, we know we've got a situation that we're going, we're working with, with city on a massive housing project. But one of the things that people have talked to me about is property that's in conservation use. Somebody can come in here and buy this farmland up, breach the conservation covenant and then develop it into a subdivision. That's not what people want. I would like to see us update our comprehensive plan such that we do not allow green space type stuff, ag property that's been in conservation to be breached and then developed while it's in, during the term of the original conservation covenant.
So never, what you're talking about, like it runs 10 years.
That's correct.
At the end of the 10 years, you could do what you want to.
You can do what you want to, but you can't breach it and take it out to develop it. That would go against our comprehensive plan. I think we also need to emphasize more on the development. And I would like to see us have a work session just to kind of review this as a group. I don't want to do it tonight, but that's kind of the thought process that I've got going on and we've had a lot of people that's talked to us about this. Just my thoughts from what we've been able to gather. So when you look at some of these things that have caused a lot of controversy in the county, it's, some of these properties have been in conservation use and have been breached and then they're out there. But I just want to make sure that we have the voice of our constituents and the taxpayers in mind when we look at this. And in areas where we feel like there should be growth as well and what our people told us. But I think we really need to look at these survey questions and look at the number of responses to make sure that we got everything covered the way people intended it to be. Because this document, I assure you, is going to be the subject of a lot of investment talk in the next five years.
Say Joey, but like, there was like, if you break like that conservation thing, isn't it like a big, not a fine, but taxes, isn't that a lot of money out of it?
Yes.
I mean, couldn't it be a lot of money if you break up?
You pay the back taxes plus a fine, and I can tell you what that is.
Two times the same.
Two times, twice what the taxes would have been.
But you can put in your comprehensive plan that you're not going to allow that to be development. That's where I'm going with that. It's got to run the term of the, of the time period. That's, that's, that's a different story because they're allowed by medical reasons, the law allows them outs. But just to go and arbitrarily breach it, to sell it for development purposes, people made that clear, they don't want that. And that's, that's what we got to talk about, David. I mean, this, but this is one area where we've got situations that could occur going forward that go totally against what the voice of our customer, which is our constituents. So I would like to have us have a work session sometime in December.
Well, worth our time to, you know, have a work session.
Probably after first year before we can do that. I mean, there's a lot going on right now. But yeah, we're planning on it after first year, having a work session and kind of working some of these things out.
You going to put that in the form of a motion?
We'll just wait, I just want to be able to know what I was coming from.
Okay. We'll move on to the 12F subdivision road adoption policy. And discussion there was, our current adoption policy says the subdivision must be 80% build out. Well, depending on the size of the subdivision, I mean, you got 20% left, you still going to have trucks in and out on those roads and then we've done said, yeah, we'll commit to taking them, but then they could still be damaged during that time, so.
It could be a 20-year process before it builds out.
Right.
Then taxpayers are on the hook for it.
That's right. So I think maybe we should look at maybe 100% build out and then we take the road over because now we've done away with all the heavy equipment, the trucks and all that before the county takes those roads in. That's, that's the basis of my discussion for, for that. Is anybody else got any comments?
Only comment I got is, personally, I think it ought to be a case by case. And the reason I say that is like Commissioner Dorsey said, some of these subdivisions, 20 years, 20 years old, 25 years old, and still not built out. But if it was a case by case, you could look at each individual project if somebody come to us and it could possibly be 100%, 90%, or maybe even 80%, but maybe one parcel land in there, one owner, he's got three lots or something, you know, that would be a build out because you say, well, the other thing is you say, well, if he sells those lots, it's not a build out. But if you went case by case, you could take everything into consideration, the age of the subdivision, the amount of parcels, whether it be a 10 parcel subdivision or a 50 parcel subdivision, just there's a lot of stuff that's factored in there, but case by case, you could deny everyone that come before this podium up here. Of course, at 100%, you know, there'd be people in here asking for variances and all kinds of stuff like that, but, you know, that would go by, back to case by case. But if case by case, we would hear each and every one of them and have the opportunity to do what the board thinks would be the right thing to do. So that's just my view of it, so.
I think if you take it case by case, you're not going to be consistent. And that's what we got to be. And I think you, maybe it's not build out, but when all the lots are sold from the original developer, consider it then, but, but there is definitely concern there. Because we've got some of these roads that, we've got subdivisions that are still at that point, and these roads have been in there for 20 years and we're going to have to deal with it.
Well, something that I'm not familiar with here, maybe some of y'all are, but this, when you mentioned developer, it's something I thought of earlier today is, you know, you got your developer, he's got to have his second coat on of asphalt and he's got to sit there a year before the county will even consider adopting the road. Well, if he sees a subdivision's not selling, when's he ever going to put that second coat on?
That's why the bond's there.
Well, we don't have a bond at this point, do we, for that?
Should have. Bond, that's why the bond requirement's in the subdivision ordinance, so the road will get done.
Yeah, there's a bond requirement.
At what point he has to do the second coat of asphalt?
80%.
80% is when he has to do it. But if we go to 100%, what, what rule change is that for him?
Still a type of bond.
At 100% though. And if he realizes he's not selling all these lots and he's only selling half of them and the housing industry's down, then he's not going to do that second coat. Meanwhile, we got our taxpayers in there riding on the streets with potholes on them and that goes back to case by case, this is where you could.
And basically, where it's 80%, 100% right now, it's still in there with the roads after like a year and then we go back and core them to be sure they're still holding up.
Right. I know the process, but I'm.
So I'm, I'm not sure I got a good answer to.
I don't either. That's reason I said case by case, then everybody has to come up here and explain everything and we can gain any and all knowledge that pertains to each, every individual road and subdivision. I'm, I'm all for the trucks to not beat the roads up before, truly. Even Red Creek Highway out here where the state has patched it two, three weeks ago, if you go north on Red Creek Highway, you'll see that those patches are throwing out the road. If you come back up going south, it ain't so bad. It's because the trucks are loaded going that way and they're empty coming back, travel that way all the time and that just gives you some idea of the toll that the weight takes on the road, so. I don't know, I'm not terrible, I don't have any answers either, I'm just making suggestions.
Well, the purpose of the 100% is that way, no more heavy equipment, no more heavy trucks and then the roads not damaged. That's, that was the purpose of the conversation. Even at that, they can come and ask for variances. I mean, we've done variances before and it could be a situation where we do allow a variance. But here again, it's not to the county taxpayers' advantage to take in these roads and put more work on our road superintendent and his employees if these roads are damaged when we take them in. So, and it costs the taxpayers. So that was the purpose of it. I mean, if we want to discuss it later, that's fine, but.
I think we got to do something because with this development stuff, you know, things start slowing down, we're going to have to deal with this.
I don't have a problem 100% as long as we can take in consideration a lot of these, and it would be case by case when they go up here looking at a variance because that's when we would really get deep into it and look at it closely. And like I said, I'm not for the roads getting beat to death, it's just costs taxpayers money, like you said, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
We're going to put it in the form of a motion to change that, not?
Well, we'll get Kim to, we can put it in the form of a motion, ask him to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Get that started.
We'll let rewrap the policy.
Because we have three readings and that sort of thing. But I'll make a motion, we ask him to look into making that 100%.
I'll give you a second.
All right, we got a motion, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five of the vote. All right, under new business, we got a poultry setback variance on 1957 Bowman Highway.
What the deal is here, Mr. Saxon's got 103 acres. 133 acres. And you got two people wanting to buy it and split it, which is, which is fine, well and good. The, what their purpose is to build two poultry farms side by side. And if I'm not mistaken, these are brother and sister.
Two brothers.
Two brothers, okay, I need a family member. And they're allowed to sign a waiver to be within, close to 200 foot. But in the ordinance, it also says it's got to become part of the public record. Y'all still need to, it needs to come from this form and y'all approve it. And that's basically what we need is to process, we have, both have agreed to sign waivers. And I think to close out the deal for Mr. Saxon, we need some approval of those waivers to be signed. And we've done this several times. And like I say, it's allowable in the ordinance, it just has to require to become a public record and this is our public record.
I'll make a motion that we do it, we approve it, provided we get the copy of the signed letters as we've done in the past and that'd be in our minutes, so we're granting a variance which the ordinance allows, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the signed notarized letters.
I'll give you a second on it. And then any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five of the vote. All right, and then we'll move on to splotch six discussion. I ask this to be put on the agenda because our splotch will expire in March of 2024 and we need to be in the process of, first of all, do we want to pursue the splotch? Second of all, how much to each department and those sorts of things. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to pursue a splotch for 2024. This, this last splotch was six-year splotch. And if we can get everybody on the board, I don't see why we couldn't have another six-year splotch.
As long as everybody agrees, you can go to six-year splotch.
And there was like a this, right, like, on the splotch, there was right here, this money here, if it was approved, could be used for first time rate payments and that kind of stuff, or wherever we designate it to be.
You will never be able to do that, Frank.
No, not with the amount of money we, that we give to the.
It's just a question.
Yeah.
It's broken down that the road department gets X number of dollars. Now, it don't, it don't specify what that X number of dollars has got to be spent for.
Anything above goes to roads.
Use it, use it for LMIC.
We all, yeah, we do our LMIC match and our, we usually add a couple of 103, 4,000, 2, 300,000 on to the LMIC amount.
That's a 30% match and then road strife and all that comes out of this.
Yeah, all, all road gravel, all you gravel, anything concerning with, with upkeep and repair comes out of splotch.
Okay. But just be thinking about that, maybe we can discuss the next meeting, how much, I mean, I'm good with leaving every, all the values.
Proportions to something.
Where they're at now, I mean.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get with the other cities and see if they're willing to do that.
And I know the economy's been good now, but we don't know what it's going to be in the future, so we, we need to take that into consideration.
Kind of a time crunch too, is what, it'd have to be on a primary or just general?
General. Well, it could be on either one, it could be on, it could be on either one, primary or the general.
Are these incremental percentages, is what they are?
Uh, no.
Different places?
Well, okay, the city of Hartland was a, was a percentage. Everybody else was a fixed set, set amount. The road department ended up being a percentage after a certain cap hit, whatever that goes to the road department. But it's set out by a specific amount of money for each one water authority.
3.2.
3.2. IBA with 3.2 million.
Well, I knew the city was percentage and others, a couple others, but I heard some of the other departments say they only get this much money and that's the reason I did that.
Well, well, that's coming in as budgeting wise. I mean, just because that thing passes today and then Pat's got 3.2 million, we're not going to collect 3.2 million in the first month.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah, so it's, I budgeted out over the years, over the six years of the splotch, how much they average they should get a year. Now, if he's got something he needs to spend money on and we got money, that's up y'all general for approving that kind of stuff. But that's where the budget amount of money comes in. Because if you don't do that, we have to go out and borrow the money upfront to have all that cash in hand for people to start spending immediately and we don't borrow money.
Would we want to have this in the 2023 election cycle?
Oh, yeah, you're going to have to. If you don't, you're going to run out, yeah. My recommendation would be to get it in, in the earliest primary. And if it passes good and wonderful, if it don't, you got to the end of November to put it back on there. Is that right?
You got to wait a year.
You got to wait a year? Okay, well, it'd be better to wait a year from May than, than a year from November.
Yeah.
All right. Kim, if you don't mind, could you, I'll put it in the form of a motion, ask Kim to go ahead and get the referendum, be prepared to have a referendum.
Yeah, I mean, we need to.
During the meantime, we just set up.
We need to speak with the other folks that's involved in this.
Give me a second on that.
All right. All right, I made a motion, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion?
So we need to kind of think about a, I don't know what days, our election days next year, I don't have that in front of me, but I know the school board's looking at a splotch for the open March, is that right?
Yeah. We, now, we're on different years with the school board. They had a five-year splotch, we got a six-year splotch.
I don't think we need to have them both on the ballot at the same time.
Definitely not.
So if they're having one this time, we, we're not going to have one?
Well, I think you got one, one. Well, I think you got one, one day a quarter for elections. It used to be that way.
You talking about alcohol and special election for? Yeah, that's, I mean, that's possible. I'm not...
We just, we'll find out what days are available and talk about it.
Okay.
We got some more homework to do.
Right. But we do need to go ahead and get started on the referendum preparations.
Yeah, at least a time, a time period.
Yeah. Okay. Got a motion, second. Uh, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of eight. All right. Next on the agenda is Sunday sale of distilled spirits ordinance and...
You have the latest draft by Walter and Kim there in front of you. I put a, I put a sample in there, but that's the actual verbiage that they furnished today.
And the yellow is the proposed changes. I don't look at copied in yellow, it's just highlighted on yours. We did a little bit more than just Sunday by the drink. We went ahead and made everything equivalent with the city times so there wouldn't be a discrepancy between the city and the county on times. And the only thing that I wanted to caution you guys about, um, we're changing that election time for election days, too. That had been one hour after the polls closed and the city was able to sell and our county businesses were not able to under our ordinance. So we have proposed some language there. We track the cities to the extent not prohibited by state law. It's not prohibited except for within 250 feet of a polling place or the outer edge of any building within which the polling place is established on primary or election day. So that's the one caution that I would have. We still got 250 feet issued to, to police there. And that is a article, I think that's gonna be Article 3, Section 6-58, when I get a final draft going for you guys.
Okay. Is the 250 feet, is it door to door or is it property line, property line?
Not said. Unlawful for any person to sell alcoholic beverages within 250 feet of any polling place or of the outer edge of any building. So it's gonna be outer edge to outer edge.
So we might have a problem in Crete.
They can't do it anyways.
Can't do it in white, that's right. As they ever were. Never did do it. It could be a problem with the voting place.
Is it intended that close? I don't think as far as that building, I don't, I don't think the building is that close to...
Why not be, I mean, I'm just trying to think of where there could be potential issues.
Now, something needs to be checked out first.
Well, they don't sell anywhere at night.
I don't call it something having a problem with that. Well, let's, Sunday sales of distilled spirits or this is by the drink is...
It is by the drink. It's defined in the previous section.
Right. Uh, can we get a motion to take this as the first reading?
I'll give you a motion, take this as first reading on Sunday sales of liquor by the drink.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion?
Just so everybody knows why we're doing this, voters overwhelmingly approve this in the referendum, so.
And that purpose is actually listed at the top pursuant to the countywide referendum vote and be consistent with the ordinance of the city of Harwood. So those are the reasons for the amendment.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of eight. All right. Now we'll move on to the beer and wine ordinance revision on election day sales. And the reason for this has brought a lot of confusion. I was getting phone calls of who could sell and, well, they can sell in the city, but well, you can in the county because ours, our ordinance is written different. So I asked Kim to go back and kind of mirror what the city is so we'd all be uniform and that would do away with that confusion. So that was the purpose of that. And...
That changed Saturday night time to midnight and midnight on Sundays. I think ours had said 11:30, the cities had said 12:00. I had given you guys a chart of the differences a few months back. So we just changed to make uniform and took out the prohibition for election day. And also this is 2022, but if y'all are only gonna have one meeting in December, then our third reading will actually be in 2024.
Okay. Kim, we get a motion to take this as the first reading. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of eight. All right. Thank you. Kim, thank you for all the work you've done on that. We really appreciate it. Uh, next is 13E Hazard Mitigation Grant Application.
Yes, it seems like we just finished that up, but it's, it's time to get our name in the pot for the next grant, which has come out in 2024. And basically what it does is pays a contractor to come in, hold all the meetings, write the, write the plan, and it covers her cost or the contractor's cost. Total's about $27,000 if we're responsible for 5% in kind for our staff labor. Actual dollars don't cost us anything. So it's just authorize the chairman to sign the application.
I'll make that motion. Authorize the chairman to sign the application, grant application.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Have a second.
Second.
Second provided Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five of eight. Uh, next is the Baker Tax Refund.
If you'll see the form area, this came through, was delivered to my office last week and you'll see where the tax commissioner signed off where they actually have paid during their property taxes. But you'll also notice on the next line with the Board of Assessors rule, there was no error made. And I'm gonna let Wayne explain the whole details of what went on with it.
Guys, yeah, during the appeal process, Mr. Baker came in and sat down with Shane and went through, like so many others did, talking about the property. And we noticed on this one, it's basically landlocked except for the easement that comes into it. And I included the area on there and it shows, shows where that parcel's sitting. And nothing out of the ordinary for us to look at it and give a break for access issues, even though they do have access to the property, but there's no road frontage on the property at all. It's just the easement, take it back in there to it, it's a large land tract that's surrounded. Shane, give them a break for that issue. Then that's sometime between that and him being okay with the change that we made on it, he went and filed this air release on it. But embedded in the deed on the property is the 30-foot easement that came with the property when they, when they purchased it. So the easement's been there all along on it, so. But what we done was just gave an adjustment for the fact that the property would sell for more out of main road frontage than it's gone to back locked in, you know, in that property like that. That's why, you know, why we made the adjustment that we did. Wasn't anything missed on it as far as easement or anything like that. Platt shows it and everything, too, so that's why we put no error on that, on the release.
How do you handle other easements? Does everybody handle this way or, because there's a ton of easements out there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, more, more times than not, they're not giving a parcel number or anything like that. So, I mean, you gotta have an easement to a property legally to sell it to somebody. You have to legally have ingress, egress, you know, to, to property, so.
You and I were having a discussion last week, actually easements are not taxed because they don't have a parcel number.
Right.
It's the property owners on both sides pay for this or...
That's correct. So, I mean, an easement...
I disagree with that.
Whoever property they even go to draw, they just...
It's involved, but it's not given a separate parcel number. It's included in...
That's what I'm saying, if somebody works there.
Yeah. It's included in, you know, within that. And that's, that's the issue here. He was saying that the easement was missed. Not sure what his mind, train of thought was on it, whether he'd been paying taxes for having it and he thought he didn't or what, but, I mean, the easement's there, it's in his deed where. We, like I say, we just simply give a break like we have, you know, for anybody to come in and showed us a problem with their property, whatever, you know, whether it be a ditch across it or it won't perk or something like that. We just looked at the issue and looked at issue of value and as compared to the same size tract on road frontage and we give them that break.
Basically, basically this is from, so this tax year follows, it doesn't back up.
That's right.
Would give you refund on any of them other ones that you're talking about?
No. The only time, if, if, as long as I've been on the board, the only time that we have issued refunds is because there was an error. And this is marked no error.
Give you an example, let's say we've been begging somebody's house for having a finished basement. And they finally come in and talk to us or what have you, you know, we found out it's been unfinished all this time and where they've been paying for a value that wasn't there, you know, or items that wasn't there for that time. And that's, you know, a situation where we can't tell because we don't go in the houses and things like that. It's hard to tell once finished, so. And that's just a sample of, of something like that, but our square footage on a house being all for something like that.
I mean, when you actually read it, "I hereby request a credit refund for state canyon school tax in the amount of $149.84 illegally or erroneously assessed against me." It's not really a true statement.
It's not.
So I make a motion that we deny the request or...
I'll second.
Who was in it?
Me.
Okay. All right. We got a motion and a second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five of eight. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we'll come to the agenda of number 14, public comment. Do we have anyone that would like to address the board on any issue concerning the county?
I would please.
Okay.
My name's Steve Wehun. I'd like to ask you about the Boy Scout hut. The Recreation Advisory Board on numerous occasions have asked y'all to come forward and help repair that. There's been no repairs made on it.
You're right. Can I address that?
Please.
Our maintenance man has researched that and he has priced materials and the material price has been fluctuating. And he, which I thought was pretty wise, is waiting for the materials, which they've come down some, uh, to wait for the price to come down and then he's going to... Also, he was talking about a tree being cut up there. If we could get a tree limb that's hanging right over the roof.
That's correct.
He has been working on that, so, but that was explanation I got when I asked about it.
Okay.
Building material.
Now, the Recreation Advisory Board has asked us numerous times through the years. This economy is not getting better. So how long do you gentlemen anticipate waiting to move forward with this project?
Well, I'm gonna go by his advisement. I mean, because he's in this world all the time. He sees, you know, and when he says it's a good time, I'm gonna trust that that'd be a good time to do it.
Be helpful with a contractor to get ready to help.
Yeah.
So when it's too tiny to meet, I mean, bringing in the long crosswalk and then the selling, the biggest thing is waiting for the contractor to get through, we can actually get there.
Sure. Now, I'm not here in, in representation of the Recreation Advisory Board. I do have neighbors who are scout members, one who is an Eagle Scout.
Right.
And it's been brought to my attention that there's leaking coming through the roof. So again, um...
What occasionally is leaking? I don't think it's leaking, the bottom of the wood floor that went from there...
Around the eaves?
Look around the eaves. I don't, I don't know. I work where the roof leaking inside. I give them a check too.
Okay. That's my concern, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wehun.
All right. Anyone else? If not, can I get a motion to go in executive session to litigation?
I may.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second.